Good evening, everyone. Good evening, residents of Litchfield, to those of you that are out there. We're going to start with a public hearing on RSA 198:20-B, which is the appropriation for unanticipated funds made available during the year. And this is for a grant of the amount of $70,232. Do you want to speak on that, Corey?
Yeah, we applied for state infrastructure money in order to build a secure vestibule at GMS. We were awarded that grant. The $70,232 represents 80 percent of the total project. So it's an 80-20 grant. 20 percent will have to come from local matching funds, which would be, I'll come to the board and ask for authorization, request money from the trustee of trust funds, the capital reserve fund that we have there for the $17,000 that we need.
Are you requesting that this evening, or?
I will request that. And I need to format the letter and figure out exactly what the trustee of trust fund need from us. So I will request that at a subsequent meeting.
So we need a motion?
Motion to approve or accept the funds?
Yep.
From the State of New Hampshire Department of Education Public School Infrastructure Fund in the amount of $70,232.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. And it's done. How are we going with the principal reports and comments?
Remember, we talked about what you wanted them to focus on for the next meeting? You were going to ask the board members?
From the community?
It's under the community, it should be under the board.
Well, then it goes, oh, it says, no, it says board comments and community comments.
Oh, you mean for the public hearing?
Was that?
No, you have principals' reports topic under the...
Oh, I must have put it in the wrong place.
Okay. No one.
Sorry.
That's all right. So I asked Michelle just to put this in as a placeholder as far as principals' reports, whether or not there is any topic we would like to put out to the principals for their next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
And if anyone had anything? We'd just like to give the principals as much time as possible if we're going to give them a subject to address or to communicate with us.
When are they coming back next?
Our next meeting.
Oh, okay, the next one. Do you think it's too early to have the follow-up discussion on assessments and, or the volume of assessments?
I would think it might be a little soon for that, yeah.
I wonder if that, we should wait until?
Yeah, right, right. Okay.
Is it, is it? Never mind. If you don't have anything right now, if...
Actually, one thing I wouldn't mind doing is hearing where they are. And I don't know if you want to chime in on this. Hearing where they are as far as what standards we're using, K-12, and where they are as far as confidence, how they're all tying together. Would we rather wait on that until Mike's on board, or, you know, just for continuity, continuing with the education?
So what is it again you're looking for?
Just wondering if it's, is it too early to talk about that?
So what, I figured it would be helpful if we got Mary here on board.
Okay.
And we can sort of get a handle on that.
Okay.
And we'll definitely want to give the reports to the board on where we are. But right now, both she and I don't know the use of that, so probably should get us...
What an overview of buildings and grounds, facilities, projects, and, you know, what boxes are being ticked over the summer, and what programming is going on at each of the schools. Can we just get an overview of those things?
Another thought might be goals, too, because, you know, maybe we review the goals that have been put in place, and that will...
We haven't really gotten anywhere with our survey.
I know, I know. So that would be helpful to know. I know we have our dashboard, but to help, you know, start going through, you know, what they think, where we think we might need to focus for next year.
This is their last report of the school year, right?
I had suggested that to Brian because I thought it would help Mike to know where the schools wanted to go, so that over the summer when we set the goals, when we start working on the goals, we'll have a direction.
Where the principals like to be?
Can they, can, can we ask the principals to send out some surveys, you know, survey the teachers, survey parents, just kind of a general? How was your year? What kinds of things do you want to see happening next year? You know, just to get a pulse. How am I doing as an admin? I don't think we do, I don't think we...
I think we can ask them while they're here. I don't know necessarily if we can just send them a, you know...
It'll be tough in two weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, maybe after the year round, they can send that out and just get some feedback from...
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to see some feedback, you know.
Yeah. All right. Well, if you do think of anything else beforehand, just let me know, send me something, and we can forward it to them. Now we'll go into public session. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, I'm the God, individual liberty, justice, and law.
So we don't have Liz here this evening, she may be coming in late. And Jim is not here this evening either. So summary of non-public actions from May 9, 2018. Mrs. Harrison made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of April 4, 2018. Mrs. McDonald, second, motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. Burke made a motion to accept the nomination of Mary Winman as curriculum director of the Litchfield School District at a salary of $90,000 for 2018-2019 year. Mrs. Harrison, second, motion carried 5-0-0. We don't have any presentations this evening or recognitions, correct? These...
Library meeting.
The library one will be at the next meeting.
It's going to be the next meeting, yeah.
And LRBL was supposed to be here.
So you're here for them?
I am.
All right, you're up.
Sure. My first time.
First timer. You can just state your name and address, please.
My name's Jason Canaly. The address you said?
Yep.
Okay, 13 Fallon Drive, Litchfield. I've got two kids in the school district. I've got a sophomore and a seventh grader. And I'm here in behalf of LRBL for Litchfield Basketball League. I'm recently elected president.
Congratulations.
So I just took over, so thank you, yeah. I've been in the program for at least 10 years doing various other positions by now, so I finally got bumped up to president. I think that's because everybody else stepped back. But, so unfortunately, I missed the last meeting here, so I know that they presented the idea that Paul was here, right?
Yeah, Paul came to us, and he said that what they wanted to do is take a look at each school. They wanted to replace the backboards with professional backboards, and they want to, like, lay out almost full courts if they possibly could, so you'd have additional facilities for training.
Right. So we did do some homework on that and try to get through some of the quoting process. So I think what we found out is that we have pretty good firm quotes and ideas of what we'd like to propose for LMS and CHS. Because GMS, because of the construction that's going on there, or is going to happen in the near future, that it seemed like there's a lot of, we really didn't come up with a good plan for that yet, so we didn't feel comfortable really providing a good solid quote and a project plan on that.
Yep.
But for the other two, I think we just want to do, they are just pretty much just straight rim and backboard replacements for, we'd like to propose at LMS to do the four internal side baskets, which are just the white metal baskets with, like, with those square on it and old rims. We'd like to provide four new glass backboards for that, you know, smaller size than the main, the full court backboard and rim.
So you're talking inside or outside right now?
For LMS, we're talking inside.
Inside, all right. So I was just going to ask, where are you going to be putting the basketball? That's one of the things you asked Paul.
Yeah, I know, I know, he's like, I know, we've talked, we threw out so many brainstorming ideas, we were going to put up basketballs in everybody's backyard, I think, at one point.
Right.
So LMS, I just don't, I feel like right now we could just, for the funding that we have available, I think that trying to focus on the internal would be better at LMS served. And then, because we are working with a recommission to do some of Dare Up on and also Talent Hall, so we're trying to split up the funding that we have between the two resources. So for LMS, it would just be the four backboards inside. And then at CHS, because you know the external court at CHS?
Yep.
It's a shorter court, but it's, you know, it's a fine court. It's just that we feel like the backboard and the rims could use a little touch-up, and so we would replace, try to replace those with glass backboards as well. And that would just require some extra bracketing. We could use the actual gooseneck and the pole that's there, but we'd just have to kind of convert some of the framing and adding onto a more substantial backboard and rim for that place.
Excellent. So one of the concerns, just so you know, I don't know if Paul passed it on to you, with GMS, is they want to, he talked about, like, painting lines, you know, to have, like, a regular full court.
Yes, right.
The problem is, it's all painted right now for the children. So it's like hopscotch and there's other squares, it's games, it's all kinds of things within that pavement area, so I'm not sure how you'd lay out a basketball court and doing that.
Right.
Plus, the distance from hoop to hoop is about two and a half basketball courts.
Exactly. I mean, that's why we were trying to, we kind of put that one on the back burner, because they did go meet with the principal, I know there's a facility manager down at GMS, and they were talking about that, but I don't even know what structure is going in there, but it sounded like wherever the one existing pole is, is just, that's going to get, going to have to get moved regardless. I'm not sure what's going to happen with it. So, and we knew that there's other painting already on the, so we were like, I think we need either see the project, your guys' project plan, to see, so we could see what's left over, and then maybe we could try to squeeze in the court and see what's appropriate. But we just, we didn't feel like we had enough details to really come up with a plan. But, so, yeah, we definitely want to consider what's there or how it's going to be changed over the summer. But we still would like to look at it and see if we could, you know, either upgrade the rims, or I know there, one of the, some of the pushback, not pushback, some of the feedback we got from GMS was that, while we want, how is this good for the elementary-age student? You know, because we're talking about putting 10-foot rims in there, and, you know, we've got a bunch of first, second graders, you can't even throw it up there. So, you know, we want to consider putting other options there. We're just worried about, unfortunately, you just got to worry about the other high school kids coming down there and using it as...
I believe that's just there now, the 10-foot, I believe they're 10-foot rims now.
Yeah, they are. And I'm not sure if that's, you know, ideally for students of that age, they should be eight feet, as well, you know, to do it properly. That's what they, that's what, you know, if you look at the NBA, even the NBA Youth Organization recommends that now, so.
Yeah.
But then we just worry about vandalism and high school kids dunking on it and hanging on it, and we had that problem at Sided Talent, where one of the side rims was just ripped out of the wall pretty much, so. But we will continue to look at options there, and, you know, we'd like to work with whoever owns kind of like a project plan for GMS to see what kind of spaces would be left over after the construction.
Corey be the person to talk to.
Okay.
And I think you'll know pretty soon after school ends, basically, what's going to be there for a structure and where exactly it'll be laid out on the property.
It's going to be, I think, there's an appointment with the modular vendor next week to lay out the design of where everything's actually going to be sitting, so we actually have a pretty good idea of how far that structure's going to go out into that park.
I know, I met with Paul and Scott and did the walkthrough with the maintenance staff with Chris, too. And I think that, you know, I was surprised to see how much of the playground the modular is going to take up, how far it's coming out onto the playground. So there were a lot of concerns about, especially in the wintertime, when the kids can't play on the play structure, they're all on the pavement. So, you know, we'll have 100 kids in a smaller space in the wintertime, so, you know, that kind of played into it, too.
The bill stays one.
Yeah, huddle together.
Excellent. So the only thing that we would need at this point, or once you have it, is an exact total, as far as expenditure, so that you can present it to the board, so then we can accept it as a donation.
Okay.
And do that, unless you have that number now.
Well, we have our, yeah, I mean, I still think we need one more iteration on this quoting process to kind of narrow it down, but, yeah, we're almost there. I mean, I can, for roundabout figures, right now, we're looking at LMS, for the four backboards is around $3,400. And to do the outside of CHS, just because we have to use some extra bracketing, it ends up being about $1,500 per hoop, so it's going to be around, just around three grand for outside of CHS. But so, I mean, I just, that's one of the things I wanted to figure out, is what exactly did you need and what format do you, how do you want it, and you just need...
Basically, what you're doing is changing off the backboard. So, I mean, if you just want to come in with your quotes, and then you'll just coordinate it through Corey.
Okay.
And he'll just coordinate through maintenance, just to make certain everyone's on the same page and when you'll be doing it, so.
Okay.
But once you get the dollar...
It should be submitted to the net, like, because I saw what your next board meeting's until July, is that right, or do you have one?
June 6.
Do you have one June 6? I didn't see it on that calendar.
At the town hall.
Do we have one at the end of June?
And one at the end of June.
Okay. So I can go back on June 6 and provide some real firm quotes at that time?
Yeah, if you have them then, that'd be great.
Okay.
And then, if you don't have them by then, June 20 is our next meeting.
Okay, well, I think we should be ready to go by June 6, at least for LMS and CHS.
Yeah. And possibly by then, too, you'll have some more information as far as GMS and have an idea of...
Right.
I feel if they're coming down, Corey, they're probably going to be marking where it's going, right?
Yeah.
Good?
Great.
All right.
Anything else?
No, I'll do it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, thank you for your time.
That's awesome. Yeah.
All right. Next, we have Natalie Hurdie here for the CCSC Committee.
CSCC?
CSC.
Let's say.
CSC.
So it says CCSC.
Yeah, I get confused. I said, they'll figure it out with me.
I want to say Cape Cod.
There are too many Cs there?
I thought it was easier than the full word.
CSC?
CSC. First my name, Natalie Hurdie, 14 Lund Street.
CSC.
And I don't know if you got a chance to read the handout ahead of time? I wanted to try to streamline this for you all. So basically, we are the Community School Connection Committee, hence CSC. A little bit less of a mouthful. In a nutshell, we are a group of parents who are all looking at what our children were doing, at what the school was doing, what the school was trying to do with the limitations of the budget. And a bunch of us had very similar ideas at the same time, and we all kind of spoke to the same person who just said, hey, you know, so-and-so is thinking that as well. So instead of duplicating efforts, we decided, let's, why don't we get together and see what we can do to work, to help our schools, to help our district, and more importantly, ultimately, to help the students of the schools.
This is going to be focused mainly on the high school, correct?
No, it's actually all three schools. We're starting off with the high school, but I have met with all three school principals. And so, just like, I'm trying, I'm going to try to follow this so that we're all on the same page, because I don't, I'm trying to stay very clear so that I don't take up too much of your time. So like, the vision, like I said, it's to, we want to be a bridge between the school district and the community at large, because we all know, there are, we have a wonderful community, but once you don't have a kid in the school, you kind of get disconnected. And our town has a lot of talent, as when Tina was going through the median income, median education, we are above average. So that means there's a talent pool in our town that can help the students to move forward and help support the staff of the school where the budget can't fill it. So that's kind of where the idea came, okay? I don't know if I'm making any sense, I sure hope I am. So that's kind of where we all, the crux of it was a lot as well, that a few of us, that when we started talking, we have children who are not interested in the traditional path after high school. They're not interested in STEM. They're not interested in a four-year college. And many of them, not just our kids, but other children, other students that we've heard, they feel left out. And it's not because the school doesn't want to help them. It's, again, a lack of personnel, of time, of funding, whatever it is, but it's not that they're not well-meaning, they just, there are cracks, and these kids are falling through those cracks. So we felt there's something, there are free ways that we can help our schools. So that's how we kind of got together. We identified three parts that we wanted to focus on. The first one being, and I put them in alphabetical order, so the first one being community outreach, which currently is kind of my, my little thing. And the goal of community outreach is to connect the citizens of Litchfield who aren't necessarily already connected to the school, to bring them into the school. For example, one of the programs we're working on and trying to figure out how to make it work is to bring into the high school, let's say you have a high schooler who is interested in business and is looking to maybe becoming an accountant. Go find a retired, a semi-retired accountant, bring them in, and have kind of a mentoring situation, but we can't call it mentoring because there's already a mentoring program in the school. So thing, it's still very much evolving. That's one idea. And also, we, we're trying to incorporate volunteers, so let's say if, shop class, and the teacher's like, oh, I wish I had a professional wood turner, I don't know what the, what it is, but for us to basically have a database of volunteers, and they can come to us and say, hey, do you have in your database somebody who has experience in this and can address the class? So now it brings the outside world, but it also brings real-life experience in the classroom. So that's kind of the first, that's one part of it. The other part is the grant writing, which is currently being chaired by Amy Goldstein. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. We know there's a lot of free money out there. And again, only so many people that are staffing our school district that have the time to research it. So, or, and also sometimes well-meaning people who go get a grant but maybe don't communicate properly with the right personnel, and suddenly things that should have been done didn't happen. So right now, Amy has been, for example, she's been applying for grants for the bottle refills, the bubbler to refill the bottles. You know, it's a long process, because I'm sure, as I'm sure you know, you don't, you're lucky if you get a grant right off the bat, so you have to keep going. But that means it's research and whatnot, and that's something that administration doesn't necessarily have the time to do. We are getting volunteers who want to do that and want to fill those needs. One of the things that I've been doing, and I know Amy has as well, talking with the administration of the schools, has been starting to talk about, okay, we want a wish list from each school. What do your teachers want? What, if you could have something in your classroom, what would it be to help you teach? And then to look to the administration to say, okay, now, we only have, let's say, four people that can research, so you put this in order of priority. What is, do you see the biggest need for your school? That hopefully will free up the teachers and bring money into the district. And long-term, I did put some long-term goals, and one of the long-term goals is to become, hopefully, that kind of centralized hub of information for grants, so that's, if you have two teachers who have similar needs, they don't both suddenly wind up going after the same grant. One can come and say, I'm going for this one, we keep track, and the other one comes in and go, oh, wait a minute, so-and-so's already doing that. However, we know this grant exists that could also meet that need. So to kind of be there as a support. And the third aspect is the post-secondary prep, and currently Sonia Costinos is focusing on that. The main goal is the fact that, we use the term to normalize the conversation for all post-secondary options. The reason we put it that way is, sadly, it is true. There are quite a few students who are not interested in STEM, who are not interested in the traditional path, but they feel like they don't know what other options exist, because that's what's being the norm, that's what every school does. It's not just CHS, it's, that's what our society is pushing. But we all know it's not for everyone. And I'm sure you've read as much as, probably even more so than I have, but they say it's like, over 40 percent of students don't even finish their second year of university. So maybe if they're aware of other options, and that's what we're trying to do, is to educate not just the students, and by supporting the staff, and again, it's not that they don't want to do it, but they're limited in what they can do. So we're an extra resource. And so one of the things we do is we also, we have a Facebook page, so we'll put up information on things that we've learned about, for example, Gap Year. People go, ah, Gap Year. I usually, I used to go, ah, Gap Year, but there's actually a need for it. For some, it's very important, and it's like, we try to find articles that can educate people. But at the same time, we've been asked to help. For example, in October, there's going to be a career fair at the school, and we've been invited to help organize the career fair, because, again, we're extra pairs of hands that can take some of the work off of their, of Guidance's desk. So that's what we're doing. And another thing that's happened is, thanks to Sonia, who, I mean, we're very lucky, Jody and Bill and Mike are very open-minded, and they're very happy and excited about all of us working together. And when Sonia comes to them and says, hey, have you heard of, they go, huh! And then suddenly, now the other parents know about it. So it's already educating parents to options they didn't know exist. So I guess that's in a nutshell. There's, I mean, you have the notes, I don't want to take too much time. There's an email, you can ask me any questions you want here as well, I answer as best as I can, but that's in the crux of what we're doing.
So I take it, like, right now, like you said, you're focusing on the high school. So I take it you're in regular contact here with the high school, with the admin team?
Yes, but I have also met with Scott Thompson. Actually, I met with him before the break, and I just met with him last week with him, and, because one of the ideas we have, and I actually don't want to speak too much about it in the public forum, because it's so, it's still, but we have an idea that we're developing, where, again, they love the idea, but it's like, we don't have the manpower to, we want this to happen, but we can't do it. That's okay, that's where I'm here. I'll help you develop it, and my goal will be to go find those volunteers to fill those roles. Does that make sense? But we're also, and I've had the same conversation with Tom, and he's, he said his juices were flowing, he had some ideas, and, but we started focusing with the high school, because all of us have students right now in the high school. And again, it's their challenges that kind of brought forth, how can we help our children? And since we're going to help ours, let's see if we can help other kids, other students at the same time. So that's how it happened.
Do you foresee having, like, regular meetings?
Yes, and we already have met a few times. We were supposed to meet last week, but I was sick, so, and I had something to do for work, so I couldn't. But we do, we meet at my house right now, and we have mentioned it to Corey, and especially for the grant writing, obviously, there's a huge connection between Corey and the grant writing, because being the business administrator, so he has indicated to us that he wants to be kept in the loop, and I've invited him onto our Google Drive so he can see our minutes, because we take minutes at our meeting. And, yeah, so he has access to that, and then when we have meetings, we'll let him know, so that if he can make it, he can, he's welcome, anybody is welcome to come. I realize as the board, you have to be careful because of a quorum, but, I mean, if some, if you wanted to rotate on who wants to come, anybody's welcome, because the more ideas we have, and the more we all communicate, the better we'll service what these are the kids are.
Well, that's one, I was just thinking about that, is whether or not it might be a good idea to have a board member at the meetings, because I think of, like, the Booster Club, there's always someone, or more than one person from the school district there.
Yeah. Well, I will say that we have our Facebook Messenger group, and that's where a lot of ideas flow back and forth, and Tina is on that. So she is aware, she doesn't necessarily, you know, chime in, but she is aware, and if she sees that we're straying in a field that, you might want to think that one through, you know, so she has that overview of what's going on. And because we're all busy, like, who isn't, we do a lot of communication through that Facebook Messenger group.
Yeah. Do you think we should have, like, the board member on that?
I wouldn't, I'd be happy to take that role on. I live across the street, so it would be easy for her to get to me.
She just rolls down the...
Better, you can even find time here at the school.
Yeah, yeah. No, I think this is, I mean, I think it's...
I think it's a great idea.
Yeah, because we haven't fundraised in a long time.
It's, it's, we're fledgling, we're just starting out. It's, it's, we're fledgling, we're just starting out, and I will say that we do have, and again, if you had, I don't know if you had the chance to read this or not, the handout or not, but our, the long-term goal is to become a nonprofit, not because we want to fundraise or be a moneymaker, but one of the things is, for example, for volunteers. If they, if, we all know, if they're, if the teacher or staff members in the room, they're not, they don't need to do a, a background check, but if they are going to, they're going to need one. Well, if people who are volunteering want to donate their fee to get the background check done, great, but if they don't, I want us to be in a situation that, okay, it's not going to cost you money to volunteer for us. So, I'd like to be able for us to go for grants. I don't want to fundraise because our town has enough fundraisers as it is, but I'd like to be able to, to either get small community grants which exist, or even approach some of the local businesses and ask them for their support, and if we're nonprofit, then they get a tax write-off. So, that's kind of the long-term.
And if you talk.
I just wanted to bring up, I love the idea, and I, my only concern, and I have to ask, like, sorry to keep putting you on the spot, but, didn't the new state law, that one eighty, what is it, one eighty-nine point thirteen, don't we have to have background checks? Isn't that a requirement with teacher in the room or not?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, and that's good to know.
That's my only concern, if we have all these volunteers, who's gonna, who, it.
That's a hundred dollars each.
They would have, yes.
And that's fine, like, I, I didn't know the new rule, so, but, yeah.
Cause I did that with all my wrestling.
I was listening while we were going, but.
No, of course.
Are you saying the school has to provide?
Well, I know most schools actually require parent volunteers to.
Or is it fingerprints?
I'm just, I know it's a pretty substantial.
Yeah, we, we, I work for a nonprofit, and I believe last I checked with seven dollars.
Okay. Background checks, if the teacher is in the classroom and you have a volunteer that comes into the district office to volunteer in a classroom, or they do not have to be background checked. However, if they're going to be alone with the students at any time, they have to be background checked. If you're going to be a, a nonprofit, your own nonprofit.
Mm-hmm.
I have to look that up.
[laughing]
Because I don't think we can background check.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Because they're not a volunteer of the school.
Okay.
Litchfield youth flag football.
You see, those are all the, uh, these are still questions that are all still, I mean, we're all well-intended parents who really want to help, we see, you know, we see how hard our, our school personnel and district is working, we just want to do what we can to help. But we're also learning, we're also novices. I do, I have some knowledge of nonprofit, because I work for a nonprofit, I'm the administrator at one, and I, and Betty works for a nonprofit, so a few of us do have that experience, but this, everything is brand-new for us. So, poor Tina can attest to, Tina, can you explain to me this? So, like, we're learning as we're moving forward.
Mostly I've just been directing them, you might want to talk to Cory about that, or you might want to talk to Bill about that.
I think that's, I do think that's something we might have to look at, just because I know a lot of districts, um, I tried to find our policy on volunteers, and it's pretty thin, what I saw online.
Oh, we have a, we have a very big policy.
Cause the one I read was just like a paragraph.
No, no, we have another one.
We have a big long process.
This is only from September of last year that the law's changed for this?
Yes, I know, I was talking to the, um, the person, uh, at the State Department that he, we asked him all kinds of questions about who do we have to background check and everything, and we've got a list of what we have to do, and as long as the teacher's in the room.
Yeah.
Then they don't have, because it's, it's only if they're alone with the children.
And I guess that's the, the part of it too, that we're still defining, is at what point are we on our own sending new people, and at what point are we a district, uh, support that you say, I, you know, that, uh, we're looking for volunteers, and, okay, we'll promote that you're looking for volunteer. Do you know what I'm trying to say? It's like, I'm, I think there's a line that we're still learning to navigate of what is just us, because like, for example, um, looking for grants, obviously, it has to be done in conjunction with Cory, because Cory's the business administrator, he keeps track of the money, so it's important that we still work with them, so that has to be under the, the purview of the school, but we're basically providing the knowledge, like Amy's been doing trainings, and that's one of the, of the reasons I want to, I'd like to have grant monies, um, if people come and say, yeah, I'd love to, but I just don't know what to do, I'd love to be able to offer a training and say, okay, there's, bless you, there's a workshop, and we have X amount of spots left over, so even if teachers wanted to come. So, I want us to be able to offer that, um, but ultimately, that's an activity for the school. So, I think there are some, where, there's, there definitely needs to be conversations about where are those lines where it's in conjunction with the school, therefore, under the school, the district's purview, if you will, versus when it's just truly us, truly the CSCC separate. Like, there's a, we're still growing, we're still learning.
And I think it might be important also to have a discussion with Bill to see if he can get a representative from the high school.
Yep.
At the meetings also. I think probably someone from this committee and then someone from the school itself, I, I, I think would be important, especially if you're going to be brainstorming, everything's brand-new, and you're putting things on the table, what you're looking for, even if it's a different person each meeting, I think it would be helping the brainstorming part of it.
Well, I will say that, like I said, we, we've met regularly with, with Bill and Jody and, uh, Mike, Mike comes blitzing it out because he's, uh, he's busy in the cla, you know, outside in the hallways, but, um, we, we communicate regularly, and, um, I've, like I said, I've met with Scott Thompson, and one of the things that we are doing is I'm working on a survey right now to survey the teachers. Uh, what kind of, how do they see help in their classroom? How do, what would they envision it to be? So, I'm working on that, it's going to go to Scott and, uh, and, um, Guidance Counselor, I'm having a.
Jocelyn.
Thank you, Jocelyn, and the, uh, for me, the new assistant principal, I'd never met her before, um, they're, they're going to go over it, tweak it, let me know, and then they're going to distribute it to their teachers. So, there, so there's a lot of it is happening right now more in a virtual way to try to get all the pieces together to see what can this look like. But I guess the biggest thing, like, I know one thing I, I, that's on my mind, is I want to get together and meet with the PTOs and talk to them about what we want to do, because also, I don't want to step on their toes, because there's, there's so many groups throughout the district that, but I find each group has its own specific, and we're a little bit more global. Does that make any sense? So, like, there's a lot that we're still, you know, growing and having ideas with, and some of the things, you know, I have a goal in my mind that I'd like to have a pilot project going for what I want to do in the high school by the fall. It might not happen because there may be more hoops than I realized to jump through. So, a lot of it is definitely a learning experience as we're growing and coming up with how we want this to look like.
So, stay quiet, listening, um, your ideas intrigue me, and I think anything that we can do to encourage volunteering is, should be welcomed and embraced. Um, I did have, like, to me, if you're the CSCC, you're a committee, otherwise, you might be the CSCO, which is an organization. So, I think that, to me, even before we had these discussions, I had a question, is it a committee or is it a nonprofit organization? You know, so if it's a committee, it should report to somebody, like, somebody needs to own it, you know? If it's a nonprofit organization, I have other questions, like, would the grant dollars funnel through the nonprofit or, or be written out directly to the schools? Like, I work for Families in Transition, um, New Horizons, we write out grants and it goes right to us. So, if you're a nonprofit, I feel like that needs to be, like, the rules of that have to be set in your mission.
We're not there, yes.
Or like clearly defined, you know what I mean?
Yes, absolutely.
So, maybe you start as, I don't know, whatever you want, but start as a committee, and then if you ultimately end up.
That's, that's what they are.
And that's what I, that's what we are. Right now, we are a committee, and I guess, do, who do we answer to? I, you know, I guess who owns it, we do. Who do we answer to? I don't know, we talked to, to Bill and, yeah.
And I'm not sure, because I'm new here, like, on this, on the school board, um, I'm not sure what the current grant process is. Is it like catch-as-catch-can, and whoever can do it, some teachers do it, sometimes if.
Andrea, Angie used to do it when I.
I mean, most of the grants we're dealing with are, are state and federal level, and they would go through curriculum, go through the.
Correct, they'll do them a lot too.
Yeah.
Which we discussed.
Most, that's most of what we're dealing with currently. I think they're looking more at privately funded, more contributions from, from private organizations, that type of stuff, and maybe some state-level stuff.
Yeah. Well, for example, like, you know, the, I work for the Franco-American Center, and we, um, submitted a grant to a private organization that funds cultural education for children. So, we apply for it because we are creating a program to help, um, uh, what's the word? Oh, darn, uh, immigrants who don't know how to speak English yet. So, it's to teach the children of French-background immigrants to speak English. So, we went and we are hoping to get that grant. We did receive one other small, we get one from the Rotary Club, Queen City Rotary Club, and that's helping to fund that initiative. So, it'd be those kinds of smaller grants, like, like Cory said, private grants, because there's a lot out there. I, I'm, if you're with, and you know, you're a nonprofit as well, and we, we utilize a grant station and other, uh, act, we have access to, and there's a lot of free stuff out there. You just have to know to look for it, and you, and it takes time. And that can be a huge source of income if we get the, if we get the, um, the volunteers who are, and we'll do whatever we can with who, how many hands we have. And if we get, if things work out and we wind up with, you know, five, six, ten thousand extra dollars in the, in the coffers of, uh, different teachers, because they want a new software to show kids something about math, I don't know, then they can have it, and again, and it won't impact the school budget. And that's, I guess, the ultimate role, is whatever support we provide, we don't want it to impact the school budget, and we don't want to be knocking on people's door, selling something to get money for the school, which, no offense, we've, you know, I was fundraising coordinator, it's part of the, of, it's part of it, but we don't want to do that.
So, I think at least to begin with, if Tina can be at the meetings, and then, I'd actually like to see them probably at this location, to be honest with you, and then talk to Bill about getting somebody else in the meeting at the same time. I think it's a great idea, as far as the concept. When I first read it, I think I'd read it on Facebook going, whoa.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, I was like, I, and I, I know that, like, I put an article in the Hudson Litchfield News primarily because our only, we were just on Facebook, and I thought, okay, I want people who aren't on Facebook to know at least we, we exist, so we did a little, Betty wrote a little article to just kind of let people know we're out there. I did the survey at, uh, on Voting Day, and I, I had about a dozen, um, I, I won't lie, I'm, I'm focusing on the fifty-five-plus community, and I'm very excited. We have, uh, we have a couple of great people who, they're eager, and one of the things, for example, we're going to be doing at the, um, at the career fair, we're going to do mock interviews. And so, we have retired or semi-retired HR people, there's one woman, she's all about dress for success. We're going to offer a workshop, or if she can do it, I hope she's watching, uh, is that, you know, so that kids learn, or students learn, how do you dress? How do you shake hands? How do you present a resume? How do you, these are things that we used, I don't know about you, but it was taught to me in school, but now they don't have time. So, these are things that they can impart that their wisdom on our students.
Come on.
Okay?
Does anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your time.
Is it correspondence?
Nope.
Anything, right? All right. Community forum? You know? School board comments? Anything, anyone?
Just general, I just.
Yeah.
I think in one of the minutes I read, maybe a couple, or maybe it was one of the principals' reports, are we going to have the grading committee come and report to us or prepare a report? I thought I read that. I, I know there was a grading committee formed about a year ago, and I'm curious what has transpired over the last year, and if we could either get somebody to come report to us on where they're at with that.
Tom Looklider's on it.
Yeah, yes, we can inquire to the principals next, next meeting. They'll be here. I'm sure they can let us know. Anything else? All right. We have a set of minutes from May ninth, two thousand eighteen.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from May nineteenth?
Oh, I have a couple edits. Should I wait for them back and first, or, yeah? Uh, where are they?
Bless you.
Thank you.
Um, I misspoke at the last meeting, it wasn't a Veterans' Day appeal, it was a Founder's Day appeal.
Founder's Day.
So, yeah, Founder's Day.
That was.
So, I just wanted to correct that myself.
Do you know what page that was on?
It was page four, third paragraph. I knew you'd ask that.
Ah.
And then I think in the fifth paragraph, instead of four oh three C, it should be five oh one C three, that's a nonprofit organization.
Okay.
I don't think there is such thing as a four oh three C. I looked it up.
Four oh three B.
I think, I think, I think the super technical.
Oh, okay. Maybe it is a four oh three B, I'm not familiar with them, but I am familiar with five oh one C three.
You're right.
Okay.
And you said it was page five?
Both of those are on page four.
Page four.
Third and fifth paragraph.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Oh, there it is, yep. Great. I don't even hear it. Thank you. Has amended. Can I second now? Yes.
Sure.
Second.
With the changes?
With the changes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. All right, Joe's there. That'll bring us to Cory's report.
Just get budget transfers.
See, I don't think, you don't have budget transfers listed on the online agenda, and the report's not in here.
We're wrong with my brain.
That would fall into, that would fall into the DA.
We've only been slightly busy.
Okay, we'll do it next.
But you got bus routes on the.
We'll do it, yeah, we'll do it the next.
All right, so I had sent out a bunch of information, um, first part being, uh, year-end funds, year-end projections, uh, so I had, I'll go through and summarize if anyone has any questions on any of it. Uh, the projections I'm making are based on four-year averages. Over that four-year span, we spend ninety-seven point eight percent of our appropriations budget. So, in doing that, um, I identified an unaside fund balance of about five hundred eighty-three thousand dollars at year-end. Of that, we budget to return two hundred thousand dollars to the taxpayers. With that in mind, I do think that there will be more than that two hundred left after we, uh, spend on some of the things that have been approved. So, the things that have been approved are the things that we voted on March thirteenth, which is the facilities capital reserve, which we have to fund, fifty thousand dollars. Part of the proposal for full-day kindergarten was to fund a hundred and two thousand dollars to help pay towards the modular building, so those things are in there. We have to fund those right off the bat. There's a, the school security warrant article that was approved last year, there's a purchase order in there to continue, uh, continuing appropriation for next year to complete the fence. There's a fencing project that was going to be completed with the kindergarten project. I don't want to install a fence, have to take it down and put it back up. So, we're just waiting until the, the building's in place. We had removed during the, um, budget process, some of the things they were looking at doing for the learning commons with the, the thought that if we had year-end funds, that we would fund that initiative as one of the, the priorities of the school district. So, I included amounts in for that. There was some equipment that was removed, some furniture that were removed for GMS, um, that was put back in for year-end funds. And also, we went through and reviewed the Homeland Security Report and identified a bunch of things, surveillance, um, restricting access to the buildings, interior areas of the buildings, just making things more secure. So, we went through, uh, we got quotes on reconfiguring the, the entryway here at CHS for a secured entry, putting card readers on the fire doors as you go into LMS, um, on the side of the gym and behind the music room, locking those doors during the day and have card access so that those are, those are shut down until we can figure out a better way to reconfigure the, the entryway for that building. Um, then we looked into.
So, are you saying not to have access through those doors?
So that during the day, if you come in, if you get buzzed in the main office, right now, you're buzzed in, that door's wide open, there's no, you can walk straight into the building without having to go to the main office. This would lock those doors, and we'd use these to get in, and teachers have to man the doors for kids going in and out.
This makes no sense at all to me.
What's that?
This makes no sense at all to me. I'll let you finish. We have four classrooms out in the parking lot, and we're spending all this money to secure a building when someone can just turn a knob and walk into a portable. I'm sorry, this is not.
That's not true.
Portables are locked.
But, they're locked, but you just walk across a little bridge and you can just bash in the door.
And just dash in any door, any window you want to.
But we're putting all this entryways and, do we have cameras on them?
We're working on that too.
Okay.
That's in here too.
I'm so anti-portables in the middle school. I, I just can't stress that enough, I'm sorry. What did Homeland Security say about the portables and the?
Lock them.
Lock them?
I mean.
Everyone's against portables.
In terms of space needs.
I know, I know, it just.
Ideally, yeah, you want to get those kids inside that building. Ideally, yeah, you wanna get those kids inside that building. We don't have the space inside that building currently to do it, so...
I know, that's, sorry, I had to just get it out before I...
No, I think we all agree.
Yeah, sorry.
The difference between, I can tell you now, the difference between the portables and any one of these schools, I guarantee you can get in one of these schools easier than get into a portable.
You think so?
I know so.
It's all class and tours.
I know so.
You just smile and one of the kids will open the door for you?
Yeah, we'll need to stop that, too.
What's that?
The fifth graders, will they have access, I mean, do they have to be buzzed through twice to go to the bathroom?
They have, they have cards.
They have cards.
So they'll buzz, they'll buzz in the outside door, buzz in the second door to get into the...
Oh, so they all wear cards now to get into the bathroom?
They carry one. They, they take one when they leave to go into the building.
But if they have to go to the bathroom, they have to wait outside to get buzzed in?
No.
No, the little kids, if someone, if Johnny...
They have a pass, he says.
If Johnny's by himself, he has to trot across the parking lot?
They're gonna get those.
They have bathroom pass that gets them into the building.
Oh!
They get in the building.
I was gonna say they'd lose those if they were just their own.
And they return it when they go back to the classroom.
Oh, that's, oh, I like that.
I may look smile.
It's been a long day.
So the other piece, to, to your point, is surveillance, internal surveillance at all three of the buildings was, was identified in that. So we had, the company that does our cameras currently, they went through, did a walkthrough on the building. I've had Jason Pelletier review that estimate. He went through, he found, he's identified a better way to, to get better cameras into the buildings.
Cause he's awesome.
Is this closed? Does the police department have access to these cameras?
No.
Yes, RO does, and we are talking about allowing them access in the cruiser.
Problem in the past with the police department is they wanted to use it for training experiences also, and we didn't want that.
Well, and the other thing, too, is, you know, you, you have data going, you know, security information going wireless to the police station or however, you know, somebody could hack it in and see that kind of thing. So anything that you put out there, you have to be really aware.
Pretty secure, but...
Yeah, when I met with the police chief, he said that he would, like, it wouldn't be a live feed necessarily that would be on, like, broadcast, like a security camera necessarily. He said that they would only turn it on if there was an active shooter-type situation.
It might even be, like, my access to the cameras, I have to be on the, the network to get the cameras on my computer. I can't get them at home. So it would be something probably similar where the police cruiser is in the, in the parking lot, they're on the network, then they have access. It'd probably be something like that, so that they have eyes.
I know there's ways to do it safely and, yeah.
So the, the last part that's been identified was the dust collection system in the woodshop here in the building is non-compliant with state code. John Vandecar, who's the teacher in that room, has brought a proposal to get it brought up to safety and health standards along with, and auditory standards, I guess, decibel levels in, within that, so the system would be outside. So I've included that in a, a use for year-end funds as well. He did also mention, I believe, he did mention that during the NEAS presentation as well. So that would be the list of uses for year-end funds. I just asked, I also provided backup, just showing the numbers. I would like to go ahead and start getting requisitions and purchase orders and transfers all at once to get some of these projects set up together.
Cory, how much you talking as far as furniture for the learning commons?
Learning commons? Most of that was at, twenty-four thousand down at LMS, just bookshelves and some of the other things that they had brought forward in the initial proposal, where Amy has really been the, the leader in terms of transitioning to that.
Is it gonna be in the same space, just that one area?
Yeah, they're gonna clear out that space, all those old shelves are gonna come out.
And like, she...
That computer lab with one-to-one down, down at LMS, that computer lab portion of the library will be gone.
That'll open it way up. Yeah, that's awesome.
So, um, let me see.
Why else am I blurry?
What's that?
Nothing. Also, my reports are all blurry.
Do we need to approve?
I was just gonna say, cause you rolled.
I would, I think a motion to authorize me to go forward to, to...
Okay.
Use of year-end funds.
All right, I'll make a motion to authorize the business administrator and superintendent to use the year-end funds as noted in the business administration's report.
And what's the total?
Oh, goodness.
Is it the two hundred thirty thousand, five hundred fourteen?
Yes, that's the, cause there is, let's see. I have too many papers over here. One hundred and fifty-two, six seventy is already committed through vote of the town, so two thirty, five fourteen would be the use of year-end funds.
Two hundred thirty thousand, five hundred fourteen.
Yep.
Okay, so I'll prove, I make a motion to approve the, the year-end spending in the amount of two hundred thirty thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars for security upgrades. Furniture, the wood dust collection system, and learning commons projects. Did I get them all?
I believe so. You could say as listed.
As listed. Cory's fancy document.
Is there a second?
How much money's going back to the taxpayers?
At least two.
I was gonna, I'll second it just for discussion purposes, cause I have a couple questions.
At least two hundred is budgeted.
Trying to do the math.
Through the budget process.
So the first question, guy, didn't go, I gotta just...
Did you know tax bills went out yesterday?
I do, I receive them.
So, okay, so about two hundred thousand is going back to the taxpayers. The two hundred and thirty thousand here...
Maybe.
Maybe.
At least two hundred, two hundred, I, I would guarantee that two hundred's going back.
Are, are all of these expenditures in line with year-end balances that we've had in the past or expended to use in the past? I guess that's my question.
Our year-end fund balance last year was six hundred forty-two thousand dollars. We returned four hundred eighty-three thousand.
But the dust collecting thing alone, seventy-two thousand dollars, and that's...
I just wanted to...
An air quality issue.
That, that's a project, that's an air quality issue, that whether we approve that type of project through use of year-end funds, we'd have to...
To do anyway.
We're gonna have to find a way to do that project.
Now, is that one quote?
How many quotes did he get? How many quotes did he get?
We have two, and the second one does not take into the decibel level, so it still wouldn't be compliant with the noise levels in the, that one, I think, was about forty. System was inside, internal, it would pull all the dust out, but it would still be too loud, you wouldn't be able to teach in the room.
Could we call them back and have them...
We can.
...just, just to wonder.
You can adjust that quote.
Do you have a question, Cory?
So, last year, basically, if my crude math is approximately right, it was, we used about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in year-end funds to fund other things. So part of my question is, I think you made a comment at the last meeting that, you know, so these are funds that were already budgeted that we didn't spend. Some of it is a result of perhaps getting better quotes than what we originally had put in the budget. Um, I did have... So, if I'm reading this right, there's a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars that wasn't used for instructional staff total? What? I'm just curious. And then also, like, ninety thousand between admin, executive admin and school admin that wasn't used. Am I reading that right? So that's a lot. That's not teacher salaries or instruction.
Could be.
It could be.
Don't forget, you didn't have a curriculum director.
All of those, these are all functional levels. So within instruction, you have teacher salaries, you have para salaries, you have all the supply lines, all the maintenance lines. You have all those types of things in there. So within those functions, you have all those objects, will include salaries.
I wasn't here for the discussion. My, my only question, these common areas, I just did crude math, but that's like thirty-one thousand dollars. That's like a hundred and two Chromebooks for, for direct instruction. We're buying, I mean, I hate to say it, we're buying bookshelves. I, I just...
You can't have a learning common if you can't move the bookshelves. That's the point.
That'd be my only question, just...
The Chromebooks for LMS have already been addressed. They've already been...
Oh, no, I was, I was thinking of the elementary school. I mean, you know, getting...
This furniture is so old. The furniture in there, and I don't like to spend money, but the furniture in there is so old and it's falling apart, and we have all these kids in it, and I really would like to see bookshelves. It's like a tunnel in the middle school. If you've got them on wheels, you can make any type of learning common, push them against the wall, make a cubby over here, that's what a, but that stuff's expensive in the school, and you and I can't just run to a salvage store and get ourselves...
No, I understand that.
And this is, this is a discussion we had with the last board, that this was the direction we wanted to go in, as far as the learning commons, get away from set library.
And are you just, is this gonna be books? Like, are they moving the books when the shelves are on to the, the shelves that they're gonna move? I mean, are they, are they workstations for interaction, or?
The learning commons, it, it's less of a, the library's less of a, of a, like a repository for the books and, and less of a quiet study area, and it's more for collaboration so groups of kids can go in there, classes can go in there.
But I guess my, my question is, is a, are the, the common, are we buying furniture that can be used as workstations for students?
Yes.
So it's not just a bookshelf or book...
Right.
No.
Like the coaches in there with the swinging arms and things.
Like with anything, we issued the purchase orders, we, we encumber these funds, but anything that's not spent on a particular project, that goes back into, to return next year. I'm not going into it, so if we say we're gonna spend this and a quote comes in, less than what's anticipated, I'm gonna make sure that that purchase order stays open and we hold it for return in the following year. These are based on the, on the quotes that we currently have. So like you said, with the, the dust collection system, if something does come in less, then we spend a lesser amount, as long as it complies with the, the standards that we have to reach.
That dust collection's a difference between last year and this year, and the NEAS report's gonna come back saying we need to fix it. Own it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Cause I believe it was mentioned to them. I wouldn't be surprised.
Cory said you either use any of your funds, or you find it somewhere in your budget next year.
And then to try and find that within, cause Dave, Dave does a pretty good job in the facilities budgets and trying to keep things relatively level. To find seventy-two thousand within his budget, it'd be, be difficult.
So the learning commons was not budgeted at all this year?
It was budgeted.
When I personally had my meetings with the principals, they all mentioned the learning commons and how important they thought it was in terms of the directions of, of libraries.
It was budgeted for FY nineteen, and we made a conscious decision to put them on as a strategic budget item and pull them from the operating budget to address through year-end funds if possible.
We're moving it just ahead.
Yeah, to do, just to do what we're proposing.
Okay, so if it wasn't this year, it would've been on the proposed budget for next year. Okay.
Another discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstained.
Self-level.
Next, I put together, I can't find it. Uh, propose, no, hold on.
Well, it's something the budget committee will probably be asking you about on Thursday?
The...
End of year.
The end of year funds and what we're spending.
Cory, I can share, I mean, the stock.
Yeah, this is all.
Um, shall be sending them all to the budget committee, so they'll have.
So they'll have the stock.
Also in there, so I put my, my regular monthly financials in there as well. This time I included food service financials for the end of April, along with my Fund Twenty-Two and the trust fund financials to date. These are all things that'll be included in the audit. Preliminary audit starts in June, and the end of July, they'll be in to do the financial statement audit. So these are the, these are basically the format that our, our annual financials will come out in, and these are the numbers to date. I provided the trust fund summary of funds, just to show that, so that's part of the, the grant we received from the state when I, that shows the balance that we have when I come back to, to request the amount to be spent, to twenty percent for that funding for the vestibule at GMS. Been some talk between the booster club, and they've come to the board talking about gate receipts, so I did put together a document and a proposal of how to change the procedures around gate receipts, how we would track them, and if the, the boosters wanna request some use of, some of those funds, they could provide us with a proposal and let us know what they wanna use on, and the board could have discretion over what they spend it on. But we still have control of the money as it's being collected at school events. I also put into use of pre-numbered tickets at every school athletic event, so that we actually know how many tickets are being sold and how much we're, we're making at each, each event.
So with this, with like the basketball being, if they end up collecting football, would it all go into one pool?
Yes. Yep. We could separate it out. I mean, they do, they're currently keeping it in the, in the high school student activity group of accounts.
Right.
We could have basketball gate versus football gate. We could track them separately. And that way, if there's projects that are unique to an individual sport, then we know where the money's being spent.
That's what's happening with basketball right now, right? It just doesn't seem like it's all that tight of, of control that...
Yeah, it's just going in.
They collect the monies, and it just goes into the fund. But no one, like, like you said, you get ticketed numbers now. If you're gonna do it that way, they should like, have an idea from the beginning to end.
Yeah, and if, if you have tickets one through a hundred, and there's a, a string of tickets missing in the middle, there needs to be an explanation of where did those tickets go, where, where's that money? I put together, as you know, our food service director is, is retiring at the end of the year.
Yep.
So we, we did have the position posted, and I kinda, I wrote up kind of a, an idea of what my thoughts are going into next year in terms of the food service, changing menu, changing way we operate. So have that documented here for your review as well.
Cory, when I read that, do they have the abilities, if they buy a massive amount of corn from equestrians, do they have flash freezers that they could store?
I, I don't think we have that capability at this time, but I mean, it would be great to be able to, we have so many local farms, we'd be able to coordinate some of that purchasing.
I do have two questions about the food services. A review of nutritional options, or are those mandated by whatever organization that oversees?
National school lunch program, it's a federal, we're federally funded, so we have to comply with their, their requirements. But, so we'll have to go through and see what, the menus have to comply with what they're serving in order to get...
Okay. And then I just have a suggestion to adding as a goal, review of the food service payment software, cause as a parent, I find the, the ability to track costs is cumbersome. They don't provide totals by timeframe. I, cause I have two boys, I'm trying to, like, I, I give them a budget per week, and I can't total it by week, I can't export the report, I have to manually total up every single one of their purchases. So...
Gives you the amount every day.
Cookies, chips, cookies, chips.
It's like you do the line items of what they bought, water, milk. So I'm like totaling, there's no...
Are they buying that much? You needed a calculator or something?
I need an export. I, there's two eleven-year-old boys. Anyway, I've called them, I've called them multiple times. Anyway, just, I don't know if I'm the only one.
I've noted it.
This is, okay, thank you.
Uh, other than that...
Can we go back to the gate receipt for a minute?
Yeah.
I know we have a policy, we don't have a policy on gate receipts at this time, correct?
We do have a policy.
We do. And I think it more or less follows this anyway, correct, that there's...
Yeah, more or less. I mean, we can add it.
It doesn't have the procedures.
I think we should take a look at the policy and just make sure that it's in line with this. Looking at, at what Cory has written, I think it follows it pretty well, from what I read of the policy, as far as like two people per game and that type of thing. But I think we maybe wanna take a look at the policy and make sure it falls in line with what he has.
Wanted to notify the board that there's been some changes in the Buildings and Grounds Department.
Cory, I'm sorry, I keep like back cracking here for a minute. I know as far as food service, we're looking for a new person as far as food service.
Yes.
Have you started the interview process yet?
We'll talk in non-public.
Okay. That's fine, cause I, I didn't know if we still had communication with Londonderry or not, so...
There will still be an agreement with Londonderry going to next year. Yep.
Who can talk about it in non-public?
Yep. So I, even with a small district, the Buildings and Grounds is, is a challenge. So in order to kinda change things up a little bit, just to try and make the pieces that we have fit a little bit better, the Grounds Department is now reporting to our maintenance manager, so he's now in Maintenance and Grounds. Custodial still reports to, to Dave Ross. Unfortunately, as these things were changing, I'm down to one full-time groundskeeper at this time, so we're still struggling with trying to keep up with this.
He reports himself.
What's that?
He reports himself.
He reports to the manager, but the manager's out there cutting grass with him still, and unable to do the things within the grounds and maintenance that he can. What else?
So since we're not paying somebody that part-time position, do you think we could take that money and pay a landscaper to weed whack along the fence at GMS?
So until we can...
And bark mulch and all that other...
Which fence?
The one with the half a stump and, the one that GMS, the one they all park against. And I know you're short, but if we're not paying somebody, can't that money go towards landscaping?
Until, until we can hire, cause right now, I'm, I'm also expanding the hours from four hours a day to six hours a day, to give more coverage, cause it was a four-hour a day position. And it's eleven o'clock, that guy leaves, and now you've got one person trying to finish up for all athletics.
That's why he's mowing the lawns during recess and stuff. That makes perfect sense.
So until that position's filled, I am looking into if there is a landscaper we can pull in to do some of the mowing and help him out, until we can hire the position. We haven't had any...
I know.
We haven't had any applications yet. So, and that's been vacant for almost a month.
Can we see, can we see if we can join forces with the town, on the town side of things and see if we can share resources and...
They do a pretty good job at sawmills, derride and stuff.
Yeah.
That stinks.
That's out of town.
We're looking into that, and especially...
Who does that?
Rec. Committee.
The rec. Committee mows the lawn at Sawmill?
No. They, they contra.
They like, oh. But that's all under the town budget, right? I mean, that's, rec. is under the town. It's at one of the town departments.
So if he works an extra hour a day, that's like half a field. I mean, keeping baseball, the baseball field must be a day all by itself.
You got one guy in seven fields that he's trying to, to line and mow, and if you have a game come up that you didn't know about and that field didn't get mowed that day, which happened the other day.
LMS.
Yep, so...
Ball was hit the infield, it never made it. Three, three different balls I watched go in the grass and just stopped.
I got pictures emailed to me. I got pictures emailed to me.
Oh!
All right, so we are looking at resolving those things.
I mean, I personally think the front of this school should look spectacular on graduation day, and you know how I feel about that.
So, if we get, if we get landscaper and I can have-
Liz McDonald can-
Groundskeeper up here. You want to help?
I will, I will buy geraniums to par-
How are you on a lawn mower?
I'm awesome on a lawn mower, but I have an acre and a half to mow myself. But if I plant the flowers up there, which I like to do, I like red and white flowers in front of Campbell. I'll get it in there before the landscaper, as a donation. I love geraniums.
Sure Corey could find some money for a few flowers.
We can get you flowers.
I can get them.
I think we can find you flowers.
I think it should look nice. It's like the trash should be emptied when people are coming in.
Natalie could probably hook you up with a couple of gardeners, too.
I was eyeballing the geranium, I was eyeballing the geraniums in there.
Don't take them from my porch.
I think my, my last piece is just the annual approval of the board of the investment policy. The auditors require that on an annual basis.
I make a motion to approve the investment policy. Second?
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those favors signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Oh, I did have a question. It refers to school district treasurer and assistant treasurer. You're the treasurer, I'm assuming. Who's the treasurer?
Lynn Badley, she's, it's an elected position.
She was the one that we were looking for at Town Hall.
Ah, okay.
She's also the school district clerk.
She wouldn't be a Town Hall.
Well, she's the one you wanted us to find, right?
She's the school district clerk as well.
To sign our paperwork.
Who's the assistant treasurer?
She does not have one that I know.
That's who-
And have one.
She wanted us to find, Terry Bram wanted us to find Lynn to sign us in.
Oh, yeah. To swear them in for the board position.
Oh, because she's the school district clerk.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So, Corey, as far as bus routes, that's just kind of a work in progress right now, but-
It really is, and Michelle's been doing a lot of work on that.
I can't believe how many more. I can't believe how many more high schoolers are riding the bus.
Anybody can look at them.
There's a significant increase in high schoolers riding the bus.
Good.
We have one bus that was-
Eliminated?
Eliminated, and then they-
My child does it right.
And they swi, but I think, I don't know if these numbers are actually solid.
Well, the principal to hear the next meeting, I'm gonna ask them for their assistance as far as getting bus counts. I mean, it's not that difficult. It really isn't, and-
Really?
Do we not trust the ones that they just gave us?
I don't trust them at all.
Well, one question I had was, I mean, from September to May, we now have 140 more people on the bus. Is that part of what your question is?
It's gonna fluctuate all the time. I mean, like, in another couple weeks, once, like, once Chorus is done at GMS, all those kids are gonna be riding the bus.
September, November, the counts were taken on a Tuesday and a Thursday.
If they're taking counts at GMS on a Tuesday morning, you've got 100 kids not on the bus.
Right.
It fluctuates every day, Chorus.
It does, and you can't get, you can't take a snapshot in November and then another one in May and say, here's what your ridership is.
Oh, so you gotta see averages, though.
The only reason I did this was, so I didn't give you the whole spreadsheet, because it's immense.
Because they track each stop, right? Is the bus-
Yeah, right.
Yes, yes.
They track each stop, how many kids get on. Okay. Well, I was also thinking, like, in September, maybe more kids get driven to school, 'cause it's the beginning of the year, but that seemed like a big, huge difference.
And in the high, in the high school, you see the number fluctuate also, 'cause kids get their licenses through the course of the year, so less kids riding, then they start riding other kids, and that's why that number going up right now generally would go down.
And we'd rather see counts by stop, so that we can tally it.
Oh, I think.
Because this is just, they just gave us by bus. That doesn't tell us who's getting, you know, how many getting on at what stop and stuff like that.
So, we need a lot more information on what's there.
A lot more information.
Have they provided it to us in the past? Is this something when we get our new bus transportation company, we should be putting, like?
Our bus went for liquors. Four kids last year to 14 in our neighborhood in one year, just in our neighborhood.
And just so you know, we already have one person, one elementary student on Callaway Circle.
Oh, the new development?
In Pethease.
Is that the condos or the house?
No, the condos.
Oh. There, I heard they're almost, they're sold out or?
I don't know.
Yeah. I drove through it there yesterday.
That's it.
And we also have the enrollment report, which there's really not much there as far as change. You'll send that for the budget committee also.
I already did.
That's it. Is there any questions on the manifest?
Nope.
No.
Public input. Hearing none, we're gonna go on. You don't have to get up, you can-